Cook?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Odennell?
Here.
Patterson?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Aaron Scott?
Here.
Bill Scott?
Here.
Wonkel?
Here.
Warmowski?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Mayor Ezzard?
Here.
City Attorney Beard?
Here.
You have a form?
Thank you. Is there a reading of the minutes this evening?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as circulated.
Awesome. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Hopkins, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Presentation of petitions?
None.
And any communications?
We have one. Have a request from Dennis Schumacher from Illinois College. He is the new Public Safety Director, whatever department. They would like to have Edge Hill Road closed on Thursday, August 23rd, between 8:00 a.m. and noon for the new students that are arriving to campus. We've done this every single year that I can remember when they bring in new students so that they've got that area blocked off. If there's no problem, I don't think there's any problems, so we'll let them know to go ahead and we'll notify less to get the barricades to them on that day.
Okay, and I had a late communication come in, and this is kind of a unique one because it's a surprise. I can't really use the name, or wouldn't be a surprise, but they have done this before. They're asking to use the parking lot between Don's place and Mulligan's that the city now owns for a surprise birthday party in September, on September 22nd. We've done it before. It'd be a ten erected, and then the holes would be filled back in, and I believe that parking lot is scheduled to be redone next year, so is that okay? I mean, it's the same folks that requested it, is asking for it again, and they did fine. Okay, I won't say for who, but, okay, I'll let them know. Mayor's report tonight, we have two items. The first item is the appointment of Mary Jane Million to the Governor Duncan Association, term to expire May of 2020. Is there a motion to appoint Mary Jane? Alderman Scott, second by Alderman Large Odennell. All those in favor of appointing Mary Jane Million to the Governor's Duncan Association Board, please respond by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Number two is the resolution approving the reappointment of John Power to the Public Building Commission, term from July 1st, 2018 to July 1st, 2023. Motion for Mr. Power, Alderman Richardson, second by Alderman Williams.
Be it resolved, the City Council hereby gives its advice and consent to the reappointment of John Power as Commissioner of the Public Building Commission of Jacksonville.
Discussion? I would ask the clerks, please call roll. Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Odennell?
Yes.
Patterson?
No.
Richardson?
Yes.
Aaron Scott?
Yes.
Bill Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Warmowski? Excuse me?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes. City Attorney's report?
Thank you. First of all, under Planning and Public Works, item number two, you can delete that from the agenda. That was the rezoning petition that was denied. It was inadvertently added to the agenda again this time, but you don't have to deny it twice. So there's no action on item number two, under Planning and Public Works. The first item I have is a resolution of support for the National Register, National Historic Register for the downtown district.
Is there a motion? Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Wonkel?
Be it resolved, the City Council wishes to express its support for the Historic Preservation Commission's application for inclusion of the Jacksonville downtown area in the National Historic Register. Therefore, be it resolved that it does indicate its support for inclusion in the National Historic Register of the downtown historic district.
Discussion?
Discussion, just, this has nothing to do with the local.
Nothing to do with the local.
Okay.
So I have a question. I'm sorry.
She got it.
I got it. And this might be for Judy. How do the other property owners feel about this downtown? I know we've heard a couple people, and I know there were some folks that came to your open meeting that talked for and against, both national and the local, but I'm curious how other people in the downtown district are feeling about it, and how they were engaged, or how the communication took place to know this opinion.
We have had this on our work plan for many years. It was discussed, the idea of doing a downtown historic district, not a specific map, but just the general ideas of a historic district have been discussed numerous times in our newsletter over the years. The public meeting was the forum by which you get feedback, and that's just the way that the National Register process works. So we followed that process.
So with the public meeting, were individual downtown business owners invited, or individually?
Every property owner was invited. I would say, I mean, I've heard positive response from several, I've heard negative from some. It's a no harm, no foul ruling to be in the National Register. It doesn't require anyone to do anything. It provides the option to access grants and tax credits that otherwise they would not be able to do.
Do you feel like the property owners have a clear understanding of that? Because I have been contacted by a couple of individuals who are not necessarily in favor of it, and I haven't been contacted by anyone who was in favor of it, so...
There are about 100 different property owners. As with everything else, most of the people that don't feel strongly against something don't say anything. I think one, people get the understanding that the only time there would ever be anything for them to follow is if they were pursuing a grant or a tax credit through either the state or a national source. And then they would have to follow their rules and their guidelines. But if you're not doing that, there's no restrictions other than what the city codes require.
So I guess along with that, if we got, if we get, once we got in, we're in. And if at some point the National Register decided to change their rules, what, how would that impact the property owners in the downtown district?
Literally, it would take an act of Congress for them to do that, literally.
To change their regulations?
Yeah. Congress passed the National Register Act back in 1970 something, and there really hasn't been rule changes. It's administered by the Secretary of Interior, the National Park Service, and they're the overseeing bodies if you were to use a tax credit.
Right.
The state tax credit would probably run through the Department of Natural Resources. But again, those are not required. That's an option that if somebody was doing, their incentives for if you're doing a really, really big project, that then you could get tax credits sort of to offset some of the major investments.
So has this been available, how long has that been available to people? Since it got passed, in the 70s?
It's not available to anybody downtown because they're not in National Register districts.
Right, but why now? Why?
Because the federal government used to have a 10% tax credit, and it's no longer available. They took that out of the budget for this year and going forward. They eliminated it. So there is no, there aren't very many incentives for doing preservation work. And they eliminated the one that does not require National Register, being in a National Register district or individually listed. And so there are no other incentives available without being in a National Register district. And that includes the state one too. If the governor signs that, it would require National Register listing either in a district or individually. But nobody has to use those if they don't want to.
Are we in a hurry with this? Is there any reason we can't table it and go back to all the constituents that we heard negatively from, and try and explain to them what it's going to be now, and then get their support of it before we pass it?
There is state action pending later this week, and they, as part of their process, Springfield, they're requesting later the City.
The state requested that we get it done this fiscal year.
This fiscal year?
There, this, yeah. So there's a...
Laurie?
Correct. That was my take when I went to the meeting, was one, that the property owners were uninformed. They did not know that this was taking place. It felt like, actually, when I was there, it felt like they were kind of blindsided. So I think there is also that confusion of the local and the national. The national is just going to register you. From everything I've read about it, it gives incentives, it gives the tax breaks. There are no regulations set by the national saying that you can and can't do. That would fall on the city's ordinances. However, what bothered me about it was, again, the property owners, their opinion to me and everything that I picked up was they had no knowledge that this was taking place. So at that point, I'm looking forward to this. I don't know if any property owners would like to talk, but my stance on this is going to be as a hold. I'm going to say no, because I just felt like the property owners downtown had no idea that this was happening, and the lack of information on their behalf, I can't support this.
Danny? Speaking for myself, I mean, I know, I knew this was going on because I'm in Main Street, and I get the newsletter, and I kind of am in tune with what's going on downtown. But as a representative of Ward Five, like you just said, a lot of the property owners did not know about this. The initial vote was scheduled before the actual public meeting, until we moved it back now. So at this time, I don't think I can vote to support this, although I think I want to, but I want the business owners to be behind that. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion to table this until next meeting, so we can have an opportunity for more of the business owners to get behind this or make a determination on facts.
Okay, we got a motion on the table to table. Is there a second to table?
Alderman Williams, we'll call this for the table, I believe? And I would ask the clerk to please call, roll on the table. Motion? Motion to table. Hopkins?
Yes.
Odennell?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Aaron Scott?
Yes.
Bill Scott?
No.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Warmowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion is tabled.
Second item I have, first we have the margins of emergency clause amended the ambulance orders.
Okay. Is there a motion on the emergency clause? Alderman Patterson, second by Alderman Scott, Aaron Scott? And I'd ask the clerk, please call roll on the emergency clause.
Odennell?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Aaron Scott?
Yes.
Bill Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Warmowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion for second reading? Alderman Bill Scott, second by Alderman Large Odennell.
Being ordained that Chapter 30 on vehicles for hire, the ambulance orders be amended to reduce the number of minimum required ambulance in town to three, if there is only one ambulance provider, and came in at four, there should be two providers.
Discussion? I would ask the clerk to please call roll. Odennell?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Aaron Scott?
Yes.
Bill Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Warmowski? Williams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. I believe we have some public comment this evening, gentlemen. Who wants to run? You want to lead off? You want to step up and state your name?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ron Hofstadt, and I'm a, live in Prairie Knowles. I've been a resident for 17 years. I'm 81 years old, and I was hoping to spend the rest of my time here in good old Jacksonville. And my wife wants to too, because that's where her parents are from. One of them's still alive in Scott County Nursing Home, 92-year-old, her mom. But the thing that had just arisen is, late as December, we got a notice from an outfit that's, you probably are familiar with, and it's Brando Management Company and Time Out leases. What they've done is, they've raised our lot rent, and the lot rent's been raised anywhere in our facility there, Prairie Knowles, from 41% to 58.38%. This is really a hardship on a lot of the seniors. We have a lot of seniors, we have a lot of veterans, we have a lot of disabled veterans, and they can't move. These are double-wide manufactured homes. To move any of these homes to another location would run many thousands of dollars. If you're taking apart in two halves, three axles put under them, a tongue put on them, and then, that's five, depending on the length of the homes, that's anywhere from $5,000 to $7,000 per half. Then there's the idea, you have to move it down the road. So this is what our options have been, when we talked to them and said that we can't afford doing this, well, you can always move. Well, it's not that easy to move our homes. And the other thing I found out is, ours included, a lot of the homes, the garages were put up after the house is put up, of course, because a lot, everybody wanted a garage. So now the garages are in the way to move the house. So then the garages would have to be torn down, that would be another expense. If they're going to a rural area, then they'd have to be up with codes, whether they have to, so a footing, and a slab, and, you know, or whatever they, the area has in their codes, building codes. So the other problem is going down the road, if there's any power cables or things going across some of these rural county roads, wires would have to be lifted, more expenses. So, you know, the whole thing could get to a $20,000 easily before they're done moving their home to another location. And like I said, they're all on fixed incomes. Now, I know that the law protects the state of Illinois, and some of our neighbors like Indiana, Missouri, Wisconsin, have these same rules, that a landlord can come in and raise any price he wants, what he feels fit. So what happened here is, from what I understand, the national average is somewhere around $4,000, $400 a month, somewhere in that area, 425, 450. So they took a national average, and they came up with our 365. But I have a gentleman sitting right here who called their Springfield outfit, which has a Peoria phone number, but they answered Springfield, and they belong to this Time Out leasing. He asked them, I could let him say this, but he'll back me on it. He asked them, what would it cost if he brought in a home that he already purchased? For instance, it would be 68 by 28. What would it cost to put the home in there, and do you have lots that are available? And they said, yeah, we have lots available, no problem. Okay, now what would it cost? And she said, $450 a month. Now, there's been some other people that have gone from rolling acres, and I'll let Danny here explain that, but their rent has gone up 78, or 87%, excuse me. That's for Danny's lot, which is now 195, and it'll be 365. But Spradlin, who's still the manager for this park that he used to own, all these parks that he sold out, all five of them, and with Woodson included, said that there's only a month-to-month lease. And the state law, that's one thing I've looked up on, is got all the rules and laws for the state of Illinois on this, is they have to give us a two-year written lease, renewable, 30 days before the lease runs out, to renew for another two years. Not only that, but they have to give us also information, like what will it cost the third year? That hasn't been done. So I'll let Danny explain some of the things going on over there, and how the people are fleeing. He's got over 55 empty trailers, I think, now. But the problem is, this is a humanity thing. This is a problem. When people, these older people are going to be out on the street, they can't, they can't do this. So we've got churches behind us, and we need to get something done. It's just a, it's just a terrible thing to happen. They got the law behind it, but the law needs to be changed. It needs to be changed to a point where it's a 10% increase. That's what I proposed to the people, a 10% increase. I have over 100 signatures with Danny's signatures, and that's all I have to say for now. I just want you to consider this and see if there's any possibility we could get anything done, make it a little better.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Danny Davidson. I've lived in this community for 68 years, raised with Tony, worked at Marcy. I was paramedic at Pasman Hospital for 30 years. So I've been in this community for entire 68 years of my life. When I was growing up, Lincoln Avenue was as far as you could go in Jacksonville, and after that, it was hog farm and grazing land. Now we have moved on to bigger, better things. Unfortunately, in my 68 years, I sit and I thought about it since all this has come about with this new company, never have I found any company, organization, business, or anything that's ever come to Jacksonville and tried to make a fortune on the backs of people that just don't have the money to do it. Basically, I read, a letter is written to these gentlemen that run this association, and it basically come back and said, the people that owned it before you did a very bad job. We're not going to do a bad job. We're in the business. We're here to make money. If you don't want to pay it, get out. People have called them, and they just basically tell them, either pay it or get out. I did door-to-door at Rolling Acres. I estimate about 150 trailers there. 55 of them are empty. I mean, empty, empty. Some of them don't even have doors on them. If you go to the website that this company has, the trailer across the street from me has been sitting there for two years with the door open. They want $520 a month for that trailer, if you want to rent it. Several ladies have contacted me that have tried to buy three-bedroom trailers that are sitting at Rolling Acres, and each time they call, they get a different price, anywhere, it's went from $700 to $1,000 more than, you know, on each bid. And they said, well, we'll buy them and move them. And they said, no, you can't move them. Well, I don't believe that's the law. I don't believe in Illinois you can do that. You can sell a trailer and then tell the people they can't move it. I think the situation is, in Rolling Acres, is I've got disabled veterans, I've got senior citizens that's been there for 40 years, some of them longer than that. This is their home. They've had very little increase. I've been there 20 years, and I started out at $125, sitting on the pond. After my son passed away, I moved to the back by Hudson's horse thing back there. It was like $180. It went up to $180. Last year, it went up to $195. I don't find that outrageous. Progress. Everybody has got to have some improvements. Improvements haven't been made at Rolling Acres, but, you know, we went up $15. Then we get a letter that says, starting August 1st, that $195 is now going to be 365, or you could have it taken out of your checking account and only be 350. I go down, I talk to them. I said, well, I'd like to have a two-year lease. Well, we're not going to lease, we're doing month-to-month. So I wrote a letter to Yanni down in Florida, who supposedly takes care of all this. She sent me a letter back and said, go check with Jeff Spradlin about your lease. He owned Prairie Knowles and sold that, and I really don't know who owned Rolling Acres. It's been sold two or three times since I've lived there. Nobody's ever told me. I just pay my rent. But he's the manager of it now. The people that live at Rolling Acres, I've got an MS patient that has nowhere to go. He's got a $25,000 grant in the state of Illinois to, because if he does, the state's going to come in and take all that back if he's got to move. He's got a place he can go. He said he can go out on a farm, way out in the country. Nobody's going to be able to find him out there. He's got a guy that comes in three days a week now that helps him out. He's not going to be able to drive another 25, 30 miles. His business went bankrupt here because of the internet. He owned A1 Awards, and I mean, you know, he sent him a letter and told him his situation. They never answered him. You know, I, it's, it's a sad what's happening to the senior citizen. I'm a senior citizen, a lot of us are senior citizens. I'm not saying I can't do this for right now, because I'm a disabled veteran, and I do get some money from that. And so I could do that increase, but it's going to go higher. I know after the first year, he was saying the national average is 4, 4 and 1/4. The national average is 475 across the board in the United States for trailer parks. They have a company that goes around, and you tell them how much you want to make, and they will tell you what you need to charge for your manager, your lot rent, what it's going to cost you to fix things, and that's what you pass on to your people. We're senior citizens here. This is not Florida. This is Jacksonville, Illinois. We're a small community, and people are surviving. That's all we're doing, is surviving. And a lot of these people have nowhere to go. One gentleman's wife passed away. He moved in with his son. He's selling his double-wide trailer that meant in North Auctions Thursday out at the American Legion. I'm the commander there. He is not going to get anything for that, because it's going to cost $10,000 to move it, $5,000 per section. They've got everybody over a barrel because there's only a couple of people in town that do that, and so they can charge whatever they want. And so they have checked on the price, and the guy said, $5,000 will hook up. So $10,000 before you ever move it. Now you got to move it somewhere. It's got to be further in Sangamon County or Morton County, because they bought up everything. So I mean, you know, I can sit here and rant and rave. It isn't going to do us any good. I'm just saying, there's got to be something we can do to slow this down. All I, the petition I put out was 10% increase for now, two-year lease, show us some, something that's happening here. We've got streets in Rolling Acres don't even have lights on them. We've got, you know, trailers that are empty. We've got groundhogs living in trailers. Really? No, I'm not kidding you. It's, I got, we got holes in the middle of the streets, you know. I'm not putting Jeff Spradlin down, but he never took care of it. He got out from under it, and these people are going to, somebody's going to pay for it, and it's going to be the people living there. And I, and I just do not think it's fair. We're going to try to, you know, go through this to legal step. We'll probably go nowhere. But, you know, my grandma always said, if the squeaky wheel gets the oil, we're squeaking, and hopefully we'll get some oil. Jacksonville's going to get on the map with this, I'm sure, because the newspaper's got an article, and I think Channel 20's going to get involved in this. So we just wanted to come and present this to the city. I already talked to my man, Tony, and he patted me on the head and said, sounds like a bad situation, you know. And it is. Legally... Legally, there's nothing we can do. They can do it every ninety days. Okay? So thank you for listening.
Just like to finish up. One other thing. We also got a reply from the paper, came over and did an interview with me, took some pictures. It was in the Sunday paper, last Sunday. And he contacted this Mike Smart, who is the, in charge of whatever he's, I don't know what he's really in charge of, but anyway, he's, he's the one you have to, to deal with. And Greg Olson contacted him, wrote, and by email first, and then he sent a letter back. And Mike Smart sent this letter, and he even threw in a little threat to the people of Prairie Knolls. And I've got some copies here. I was gonna let you folks have. And the threat I have underlined in, in yellow here says, "We would point out to the previous owners of Prairie Knolls," meaning us, the people that have been here now, 'cause he's got new homes stacked up now, "to sell," which, not selling. But anyway, Prairie Knolls community has a cautionary tale of the perils that await those who ignore this maxim. Also in here is a, a copy of the, of the petition that we sent, all signed. These are not signed, they're blank, but it shows you what, we proposed a ten percent increase for two years, and then at the end of that two years, we're welcome another ten percent increase for two more years, and so on and so on, and gradually get up to a point. That gives us a chance to sell our homes, 'cause right now, at three-sixty-five, that's forty-two-hundred dollars a year for a lot rent. My wife has a cousin that lives, I think it's fourth house down on Main, south of Morton, two-story brick, two-car garage, it's a very deep lot, but a narrow lot. All them lots are deep but narrow. And he's paying twenty-eight-hundred dollars a year in taxes. So, I mean, who would buy our house if we tried to sell our house? We can't now. Not with that kind of, even at the three-sixty-five. It'll go to fif, if they go to that forty, four-hundred-and-fifty a month, which is what they quoted on the phone, that'd bring it to fifty-four-hundred dollars a year for a lot rent. That's way over what taxes are if you go buy a house and you, at least you own the land. See, there's no end to this. And what they're doing is they're selling new homes, and they're putting the lot rent in with the price of the home at fifty-nine thousand, a twenty-year lease. I just added eight percent sales tax to it, and see what that come out to, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars in twenty years. That's not what the interest, and nobody knows what the interest is. When you ask, "What is the interest on the new homes?", they say, "Well, that depends on who's, you know, who's applying for, what their credit is, and what size home, and what different, you know, things that you wanna have in your home, and all that, you know, part of it." But the thing is, just like I said, and Danny said, none of the elderly people out there, or most of us, can afford this. I'm eighty-one years old. I don't, I don't wanna ever have to move again. This is my third home, and I want it to be my permanent home, 'cause I like Jacksonville. I come from the rat race up north, Lake County, Illinois, which is booming, and I actually got forced out of my home up there because of high ta, the taxes were unbelievable. I was paying, my taxes went up the last year I was there in two thousand and one on my property and house to sixteen-hundred dollars a year, uh, thousand dollars a year, excuse me, sixteen thousand dollars a year. And I was retiring. I can't do that. Sixty-five years old, I retired. I'm on Social Security now, Medicare. I'm still on Social Security, Medicare.
Sir?
Ron.
Did you bring us, you brought us copies of the letter? You brought copies of this letter for all of us? Great. I'm not sure what I can do or what we can do to help you, but I, I, I know we can talk to people, and I know we can make phone calls, and, and we can rally support even among our friends. So I thank you for your time and for telling us what you have going on. As an alderman, I'm not sure what I can do.
I'm not sure what can be done. I am curious about the two-year lease department, 'cause I'm not familiar with that. I'm just not sure.
But I assure you, we're all gonna leave here and go figure out what we can do as a community and as aldermen and, and as city leaders. So we can't give you an answer right now, but we can tell you, we heard you very loudly, and we're gonna go figure out if there's anything at all we can do for you.
I went around and got all the petitions in my area, my wife and I both. I first dialed it by myself, but I, I had to get a little help, 'cause I got kinda interrupted in the middle of this petition thing. I got a new heart development on the twenty-third of last month. So I missed about two days, and I was back down the foot again, and taking my time 'cause the weather's been pretty bad. But anyway, we tried to get a lot of houses done, and here's what happened. You go down the street, and you knock on the door to get this petition signed, people say, "Please come in, please come in," and then they tell you their story, you know? Like, my husband, he's ninety-one, I'm eighty-two. We felt we had money to make it through our lives, but we put four kids through college, and we ran out of money, and now we're on Social Security. Last year, my husband, this is just one true story I'm telling, said, "He went out to get the newspaper, and he slipped and fell on the ice and hit his head, and he was taken in a helicopter to Memorial Hospital, and they had to drill two holes in his head to relieve the pressure on the brain, and now he's messed up, still messed up big time." So he walks like, like a guy who's drunk or something. I mean, just, he can't, he can't get around. He has to hit walls, he's a delivery van, off, and, and she was just crying, and what am I to do? What are we to go with? How can they do such a terrible thing to us? The other thing is, I, I read in some of the rules in Illinois, that we were supposed to get a year from our former landlord notice. That was being sold, and we never got that. We got a notice much, much later, a year. I think our first notice that it was up for sale, or gonna be sold, was in April or something, and then the next one was in December. That was the, right after that is when we got the letter from the people who bought this up.
We don't begrudge Spradlin itself, that it was his land, he can do whatever he wants, but the new company is taking over, it's basically just gonna ram it out for a period. And if you don't like it, it's gonna cost you, and they told us straight out, it's gonna cost you forty-five thousand to move your home. Well, that's not exactly true. I checked, I have, I have probably the biggest house out there. I'm thirty-two feet long, no, thirty-two feet wide and eighty feet long. It's gonna cost between ten and thirteen thousand. And that depends on where you live, too. We are entitled by the state of Illinois. They cherry-picked the law and gave us what they wanted us to reap, probably thinking that we would never look at the law and see what the heck we actually could do. Honestly, we can't do a lot, but we, by law, are entitled to a two-year lease. Now, in that law, they can also specify what the lot rent will be the following year, if they would like. Normal case is according to my attorney, they give you a two-year lease, and the lot rent stays what it's at for the two years. Then we start up again. Nationally, the lot rent usually goes up anywhere from ten to fifteen percent a year throughout the United States. As far as four-seventy a month, I think you, four-fifty. The only place I've found that was more expensive than what this is going to be was in Jacksonville, Florida. It has eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand people, a huge name of place. Their average is four-seventy. The other highest one I found was Torrance, California. So we all know about Los Angeles, California to begin with, so I won't address that. Most cases in the area, I call around Springfield and Litchfield and Peoria, is around three, three-and-a-quarter. With the exception of Grand Valley Village, I was able to get some feedback from the people there, which timeout just bought them. And theirs is gone from three-eighty-five to four. So we don't believe there's anything the city council can actually do. We just wanna make you aware of what's going on and what we're trying to do.
And we certainly appreciate the information tonight.
It's, it's just not right. I mean, you can't do this. I got all this next door, and she's in her eighties. She has nowhere to go. She can't pay this. I don't wanna eat dog food for crying out loud, I'm just trying to pay these people. And this outfit, they've only been in business, this random management who's gonna be collecting all the lot rents, and we can pay them from Walmart, by the way, if they didn't want. They've only been in operation ten months. But the big wheel man that owns all this has fifty-one businesses in Florida alone. He's a billionaire out of New York City. We're a farming community of nineteen thousand people. We don't have the huge jobs and the huge paychecks that other larger cities have. People can't pay that kind of money in a town of nineteen thousand people. I don't know whether they'll pay the four-fifty or four-twenty-five that's gonna be in Springfield, a hundred-and-twenty thousand people. That's remained to be seen. So I won't belabor this point any further. I may have more things as time goes along. I've addressed this with an attorney already, and he's informed me that there is nothing that we can do.
Well, we, we appreciate your time. We appreciate the information.
One other question. In this packet, and there's an email in here that Gray Knoll suggested contacting the Illinois Attorney General, Consumer Affairs Division. Did you contact them yet?
Contact them now?
The Illinois Attorney General, have you contacted? You did contact them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I talked to him, but the Attorney General is...
That's, well, you talked to Gray Knoll, but did you, did he, you called Lisa Madigan's office?
He called me back today. I was up there at the office, and he was out, or in a meeting. He called me back, and he says, and I already knew this, he says, "Two things you need. You need a judge, pro bono judge, and a pro-law attorney, because you can't get that kind of money, you know, from the people there, you know?" All those that signed that petition said, "We'll sign a petition, but we, we haven't paid money, and we can't help you."
Right. Oh, you're talking about Lisa Madigan's office for the state of Illinois told you that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
They sent me a letter.
Okay, I thought you meant Gray Knoll.
Lincoln Land, Land of Lincoln. They sent me the rules, and that helped me quite a bit. Actually, Gary here, he had a better stack, the real official ones, that gave a lot more information on it, so. But he says, "Yes, you need a judge to put an injunction on it, and to renegotiate something with them, and with that ten percent, that sounds like a good place to start."
Well, we wish you luck with that, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. And if there's anything that we come across looking into this, we'll definitely share it with you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ron. Danny. Let's see, where were we? Consent agenda items tonight, finance, IT, and personnel. Alderman Cook?
One item tonight, Mr. Mayor, and it's a city treasurer's report, whichever one is received in their packet tonight for May thirty-first of twenty-eighteen.
Okay, Parks and Lakes, Alderman Patterson. We're gonna pull probably a couple of these, aren't we?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We have three items tonight, Mr. Mayor. Number one is a resolution awarding contract for the construction of a multi-use path at Lake Jacksonville, I believe, to K-E-Vass. Number two is a resolution authorizing the waiver of advertisement for bids and accepting the proposal for the purchase of a three-quarter-ton truck for use at the Parks and Lakes Department. And number three is the resolution amending ordinance number twenty-eighteen oh zero zero five, an ordinance amending the Jacksonville Municipal Code, Chapter Twenty, Parks, Section Twenty-Dash-A, Fishing, Boating, Overnight Gambling Fees and Regulations.
Planning and public works, Alderman Scott.
We have one item tonight, Mr. Mayor, resolution awarding contract for the MFT program.
And public protection, Alderman Williams.
I have three. The first one is resolution declaring police department vehicles as surplus property and authorizing the manner of sale. The second one is resolution authorizing advertise, advertisement for bids for the purchase of the K-nine vehicle for the Jacksonville Police Department. And the third is resolution approving agreement with the Jacksonville School District, one-seventeen, for two resource officers.
And is there a second? Second, okay. Oh, Alderman Patterson? You've heard the items under the consent agenda. Is there any you wish to pull for further discussion? Alderman, Marjolino?
I'd like to pull Parks and Lakes, action item number one.
Okay.
What is it, number one?
Number one.
Number one, the path.
I'd like to go on to it.
Okay.
Question for Attorney Beard. In Parks and Lakes Three, under letter D, it says "system" instead of "swim." Is that okay? Is that just a technical change you can make in the ordinance? Do we have to change that?
That was, that was corrected on the resolution. You got, you guys got the copies before the correction was made.
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna ask about that.
Okay. Any others? I would ask the clerk to please call roll under the consent agenda. Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Aaron Scott?
Yes.
Bill Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Formowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Odenel?
Yes.
Motion passes, consent agenda. Very good. Committee reports tonight, Parks and Lakes, Alderman Patterson.
Yeah, yeah. Number one is a resolution awarding the contract for the construction of a multi-use path at Lake Jacksonville to K-E-Vass.
Is that a motion? Is there a second? Alderman Wonkel?
Here is the address, the contract, the construction of a multi-use path at Lake Jacksonville, to be awarded to K-E-Vass, and I assume this is a, maybe four-thousand-dollar worth full path amount.
Do we decide where the money's gonna come out of the gambling money?
Regardless, we're gonna, first two-hundred thousand of us, we have to...
Can you turn your mic on?
Your first two-hundred thousand came out of the gambling money, and I assume that we have to amend the ordinance, or we just...
Basically, the resolution, you approve what we are reading, and we make two-hundred-thousand from capital improvements, and the additional eight-four thousand, whatever, from the gambling front.
Yes. That's where it's coming from.
And again, I'll just restate it that, just the lack of information before the meeting tonight, so just uncomfortable voting unless I have a little bit more information on it, so.
The, the problem with delaying this, and Bill could, Mr. Sleeman could probably tell you as well. Bid's good for X amount of days. I think it's forty-five days. If you delay that, you'd, we could possibly have to go out for bids again and be more costly.
Any other discussion? I would ask the clerk to scroll over. Okay. Let's go with Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Aaron Scott?
Yes.
Bill Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Formowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Odenel?
No.
Motion passes.
The second item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution. I believe we were gonna pull it, but I'm not pulling it. So do you want me to read it, and then somebody else can? How's this working?
We want to make the motion in a second.
So motion for a resolution authorizing the waiver of advertisement for bids and accepting proposals for the purchase of a three-quarter-ton truck for the use by the Parks and Lakes Department. So moved.
Second. Alderman Hopkins?
We resolve that advertisement for bids be waived and that proposal on wood wheels for a three-quarter-ton pickup truck, price happens to twenty-eight-thousand-five hundred dollars to see if it's approved.
Discussion?
Can I make a motion to table until the point that we can figure out if a new truck would be a better deal?
I have a question. Have we made a comm...
Just need a second.
Oh, sorry.
You can, I want the motion to be tabled. You can either second it, or the highest for a lot of setup, the notice passed.
So is, we have a motion to table. Is there a second? Mike? Alderman Wonkel?
Uh...
Mike, Alderman Wonkel. I'll ask the clerk to please call roll on the table, the motion on the table.
Richardson?
Yes.
Aaron Scott?
Yes.
Bill Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Wormowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Odenel?
Yes.
And Patterson?
No.
Motion passes.
Planning and Public Works, Alderman Scott?
We have two items in mind. Just the first one. First one is securing our ordinance in Jacksonville.
Zoning map for property located at 851 Grove Street from R5 to R1. Nice move.
Is there a second? Alderman Aaron Scott?
Be it ordained that the Jacksonville zoning map be amended, changing the zoning classification for 851 Grove Street from R5 multiple-family dwelling district to R1 one-family dwelling district.
Discussion? I would ask the clerk to please call roll.
Aaron Scott?
Yes.
Bill Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Wormowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Odenel?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good. Now. Any old business tonight?
Uh-huh.
Any new business? I'd like to congratulate Mr. Hopkins on his son's wedding. He's married now, Trey, Alderman Wonkel.
What happened to the number two?
It was pulled because we already...
Number two is what you found last time, so there's no need to...
Excellent.
Right, right.
I have, I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Alderman Patterson?
Um, so is it true, there's actually going to be a vote on Friday at the State Commission putting us in the National Registry whether the city wants it to happen or not? So, so the vote's going to happen on Friday, right? So is that accurate information? So us tabling this has no impact on what's going to happen to us?
That could well be. I'm not sure if they will go ahead with it if notified that the city council has tabled it. As I understand the process that we go through, they can approve the National Register of Classification even if the council takes no position on it or votes it down. Property owners can come back in and opt out if enough of them get together after that. I don't know what the result's going to be, the vote Friday, if it even takes place Friday. I'll see if I can find out for what it's worth.
So we're saying they don't need a, or work in the city?
They would like one.
I can only say, serving on the commission, that there's been a lot of talk about this. Judy made sure, all this went out to the property owners, so I don't, I don't understand why the lack of knowledge is there.
I don't think notifying the property owners a week before the meeting is adequate notification?
We see that at council all the time, I see.
I don't agree with that either.
Actually, I'd like to say something. Just like to thank Mayor Ezzard for something. When I went to the, my blood, the blood drive at the Pass, one of the blood drives in town, it's kind, it's not cold enough, but you can tell that it's this really cool cup that turns red when, when you put something cold in it. Went to Jacksonville Visitors and Conventions Bureau, and they gave out a Jacksonville cup that turns blue when you put something cold in it. So I would just like to thank Mayor Ezzard for having a nice cuppy blue cup for the city.
Well, well, that's a first you giving me thanks, Steve, so thank you.
No, I've, I've done something similar like that in the past, so.
I'm just joking. Thanks, Steve. And happy birthday to Kelly Hall. Six, his big birthday today, right, Kelly?
We're going to do the age gap there, I'm sure.
Oh, Friday.
Yeah, 55 is pretty tough.
Well, I think it's a little more than 55.
55? Are you and Randy the same age?
Don't do the math.
Oh, okay. Any other new business?
What?
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Brittany, too.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Just a point of clarification. What, what do you, what am I to do with the truck? Do you want more information? Do you want to keep looking? What do you want to, do you want to just wait till next year?
I would like to know.
And look at something new?
Next year's budget?
Okay. And we, and we can, if we go new, we can pick what we want. We don't have to have four-wheel drive and we don't have to have some things like that. So we can pick what we really want to, you know, rather than just take what we get. So.
I would like that.
You want to do that?
Well, I think I'm confused on this.
Oh, absolutely. It'll...
No, we didn't, we didn't shoot it down. We said table it. He was supposed to come back with information on is it beneficial to purchase the used truck as opposed to a new truck? This wasn't nixing it and saying come back next year on the budget. If I'm correct, is that your intent, Steve?
Yeah, and Alderman Cook has a good point, too, so.
I would like to know if we made a commitment to the wood wheels.
If we were.
Made a preliminary commitment to wood wheels.
No, absolutely not. We did not make a commitment to anybody. No.
That was my original thought, that we were moving with this truck. But then when you tabled it and said to come back with more information on a new one versus the used one, I thought that was your intent.
Yes, this is following up on a discussion that we had in study session.
Right.
So I'm still confused.
So I'm on the table, so I might five make some motions to bring it off the table. So that's where we are.
That's where we're at. It's on the table.
Okay.
Come up with a new one, Kelly.
Any other? Tony?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Alderman Hopkins, we are adjourned.